All right, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call this -- to order this regularly scheduled meeting in the Beloit City Council. It is now 7:00 PM on Monday, December 7th, 2015. First item is called to order and roll call. Roll call, please.
There are six councilors present with Councilor Hendricks absent.
Thank you. Item two is Pledge of Allegiance. Will you please stand?
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three would be special days of -- special orders of the day and announcements. We have none. Item four, public hearings. Item 4A.
4A is a proposed ordinance amending the future land use map of the City of Beloit Comprehensive Plan to change the future land use designation for the property located at 20 Park Avenue from community commercial to general industrial. This is first reading.
Madam Director.
20 Park Avenue is the former location of the Cub Food Store. James Athens did buy the property and he's been in the process of rehabbing the building. If you went by there, you saw that he reduced the asphalt. He did a really nice job. He is currently marketing the building and he had requested the M1 zoning classification, which did require a change in the future land use map from community commercial to general industrial. We did look at the comprehensive plan when Cubs vacated the site and it did not look like it was going to be reoccupied to commercial use. And before James Athens came forward, we believed that the better use was a kind of a light industrial type use, given the fact that the use across the border in Beloit is a little smelly and smoky sometimes. So, we had actually thought of this before this application came forward and so we supported it. It did go to Plan Commission and they did recommend approval of this change.
Thank you. I'll open the public hearing on item 4A. Anyone wishing to come forward and speak on item 4A, please approach the podium and state your name and address. Second call for persons to come forward and speak on item 4A. Third and final call for persons to come forward and speak on item 4A. Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on item 4A. And we have -- do we have a motion to lay this over?
Sound moved.
Move by DeForest, second by Slonaker. Any questions or comments before we lay this over? Hearing none, I'll call the matter. All in favor of laying this over to our next meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Item passes six to zero. Item 4B.
4B is a proposed ordinance amending the zoning district map to change the zoning district classification of the property located at 20 Park Avenue from C3 to M1.
Madam Director.
This is the zoning piece. The applicant has requested the zoning district classification to be changed from C3, Community Commercial, to M1, Limited Manufacturing District, so he could use this building as a light industrial use. And this is on your agenda for a public hearing only.
Okay, so it's the companion piece. All right, I'd like to open up public hearing on item 4B. Anyone wishing to come forward and speak on item 4B, please approach the podium and state your name and address. Second call for persons to come forward and speak on item 4B. Third and final call for persons to come forward and speak on item 4B. Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on item 4B. And do we have a motion to lay this over to the next meeting?
Motion.
Move by Lubkey, second by Slonaker. Any questions or comments before we lay this over? Hearing none, all in favor of laying over, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We've laid this over to the next meeting by a vote of six to zero. Item 4C.
Is a resolution approving a conditional use permit to allow a religious institution in an R1B, single-family residential district for the property located at 1230 House Street?
Yes, I believe that Councilor Slonaker will need to recuse at this moment.
Marilyn Slonaker has applied for this conditional use to allow a religious institution of the property located at 1230 House Street. The building is approximately 1,800 square feet and was constructed in 1962. She doesn't intend to make any significant modifications to the building. The property was once used as a church before it was converted into an after-school facility in 2003. We did send the public notice out to the nearby property owners. We did get one written response from a neighbor who is cautiously supportive of the proposed church use but concerned about potential conflicts. She's not making any modifications and she does intend to use the adjacent parking lot over by Kruger Park for the parking needs. Plan Commission did review this item on November 18th and voted unanimously to recommend approval, subject to the conditions which are listed in your resolution, which are that this conditional use permit authorizes the use of the existing 1,800-square-foot building on the subject property as a church, including customary accessory uses. The existing sign structure must be removed completely or refaced to reflect the applicant's organization by April 1st, 2016. The applicant shall encourage parishioners to use the adjacent public parking lot in Kruger Park and to limit their use of on-street parking in this residential area. No residential use of any kind, including transitional or emergency housing, is allowed on the subject property. The applicant shall maintain and may not remove the existing vegetative buffer along the southern and eastern perimeter of the subject property. And then our standard condition about major changes coming back through this public process and that staff can approve minor changes administratively. And Plan Commission did recommend approval of this unanimously.
This is for action tonight.
This is for action.
All right, open the public hearing on item 4C. Anyone wishing to come forward and speak on item 4C, please approach the podium and state your name and address. Second call for persons to come forward and speak on item 4C. Third and final call for persons to come forward and speak on item 4C. Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on item 4C and I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Move by Lubkey, second by Kincaid. Madam Vice President.
Thank you. Ms. Christensen, could you -- that's all right. I saw on the staff summary and you also mentioned that the one person who wrote with concerns about the conflict, did they detail what they meant by that?
They made some strange remarks on a public notice, concerned about the type of church it was and not sure what it would be, and concerned about issues in the neighborhood and just said that it was worth -- in the end, it said it was worth giving it a shot and if it didn't work out, they could always file a complaint and we would follow up on it. So, it was kind of a strange response, but I think --
Okay, so you weren't able to discern.
I think concerned more that it wasn't a traditional church and that it was a non-denominational and not, I think, not quite sure with what that meant.
Okay.
And then they just -- but they said that they were -- that it was worth giving it a shot, is what it said in there.
Thank you, I just wanted a clarification.
Are there any other questions or comments? Councilor Kelly.
So, is this is R1, RB1?
R1B.
R1B? And is this a tax-paying property or no?
Churches are tax-exempt.
All churches are tax-exempt?
I think all churches are tax-exempt.
It was a church, then it was a single-family?
It was a church and then it was a school-age center. So, Kitty Ranch had, in 2003, established a school-age center, so it was for kids who are beyond the daycare, you know, for an after-school program. And then they ran a summer school program. And I'm not sure why they -- maybe they just wasn't needed anymore in the neighborhood, but they ran that for over 10 years. And then now Marilyn has purchased it with the intention of running a church and offering community services at this location.
I don't want to ask her, but I don't -- nothing.
Are you satisfied there, Councilor Kelly?
I'm just wondering, what makes it a church? What? Just a question.
From an assessment perspective, I don't know what you have to file to be tax-exempt.
If I wanted to create, say, I'm making a church, is that -- is there some sort of --
There is a process for that. I'm just curious about that.
Yeah, okay, sorry about that.
There isn't a place to ask, but...
There is a process for that, Councilor Kelly. Perhaps I could share with that after the meeting.
I'm just curious.
All right. Councilor Kincaid.
I'm familiar with the building. It certainly is a residential scale. And I had to look at it twice to figure out if it was a single-family home or a church or something. So, I think from just from a land use standpoint, I think this is appropriate, provided we don't have flashing, moving signage on the front yard.
You had to go down that road.
Her intention was just to have the name and some contact information on the sign.
Yeah.
Because she came in after the Plan Commission meeting to talk about signage. So, she is not planning to have flashing signs. And it may have been a single-family dwelling at some point in time, but we don't have any records that show it was used that way. It might have been years ago, since it was built a while back.
All right. Do we have any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the matter. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Item passes by a vote of five to zero with one recusal. And we can...
Yeah, we're good. Thank you, Tony.
And finally, we have a public hearing on item 4D.
Which is a progress report on the Community Development Block Grant, Disaster Recovery Grant.
Mr. Boyson.
The City of Beloit suffered damage to its streets and shorelines during the floods of June and July of 2008. In 2008, the State of Wisconsin received disaster recovery funds from a variety of funding sources which were made available to communities impacted by those floods. The City of Beloit had previously received $2.2 million in disaster recovery funds, which were used to reconstruct and elevate Sherlin Avenue, stabilize the shoreline of the Rock River, at a number of locations, including between Public Avenue and -- I'm sorry, from Public Avenue to the Rock River Generating Station, from the Riverside Lagoon to Henry Avenue, a bridge on the east side of the river, and along the post office property. Funds also installed a new flood wall by the post office and raised the electrical transformers at the Sherlin Avenue lift station. In 2015, the City of Beloit received an additional $319,000 in disaster recovery funds. The city is utilizing these funds to stabilize the stream bank on the west side of the river between the dam and Liberty Avenue. City Council awarded bids for this project on October 19th to the Bajorne Linestone Inc. Company, and a majority of the project is complete, as noted in the submitted photographs. The final pay on this project will be completed in the next month or two. The City Council's participation plan related to the grant and the state requirements require the city to provide this update to the community and give citizens the opportunity to comment on the project. It is wonderful that this project has no financial impact on the city, since the grant does not require local funds. And this item is a public hearing item and no formal council action is being requested on the project this evening.
Thank you. I'd like to open the public hearing on item 4D. Anyone wishing to come forward and comment on item 4D, please approach the podium and state your name and address. Second call for persons to come forward and speak on item 4D. Third and final call for persons to come forward and speak on item 4D. Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on item 4D. Thank you, Mr. Boyson. Item five is citizens' participation. We've reached the point in the meeting for members of the public to speak to the council about issues that are coming before us or may come before us in the future. The council will not act on any requests this evening unless the item you're speaking about is already on our agenda, but we may act on requests at a future meeting or refer the speaker to staff for assistance. We ask that you hold your comments to three minutes or less and avoid making personal attacks. I have no sheet, so does anybody wish to come forward and speak under citizens' participation? Second call for persons to come forward and speak under citizens' participation. Third and final call for persons to come forward and speak under citizens' participation. Hearing none, I'll close item five, citizens' participation, and we'll move on to item six, which is the consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the General Order of Business and considered at this point on the agenda. Do we have any councilors wishing to remove anything from the consent agenda tonight? Hearing none. Consent agenda will consist of items 6A through 6F. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move approval.
Move by DeForest, second by Slonaker. All in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Item passes by a vote of six to zero. Items seven are ordinances. 7A.
7A is an ordinance to amend Section 1.28 Sub 3 to repeal Sections 1.51 Sub 3G and Sub I, and to create Sections 1.59 and 1.60 to the Code of General Ordinances for the City of Beloit pertaining to human resources and the Information Services Department. This is first reading.
Madam City Manager.
Thank you very much. Pardon my voice, I have a bit of a cold. The Human Resources Department and Information Systems functions currently reside within the Office of Finance and Administration. And being new to the organization, I wanted to see how that works, and it does function quite well. My recommendation is no reflection of any of the individuals involved or their current supervision, but I would like to see a stronger sense of centralization in the areas of human resources and information systems. And I think it's appropriate to have those particular individuals heading up those functions, reporting directly to me. That's the structure that I'm comfortable and familiar with, so it really has more to do with my management style and how I would like to structure the organization. So, I'm recommending that those two positions that are currently division directors would become department directors. There is no recommended financial impact or budgetary impact to the organization, but we do have an ordinance that creates these offices and the general responsibilities within them. And so, the amendment is before you to enact that recommendation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Before we ask those questions, I'd like to go ahead and get a motion to get it on the table.
Make the motion.
Move by Lubkey, second by Kincaid. Madam Vice President.
Thank you. I just wanted to be sure, I know you said there was no budgetary impact this year, but given the change in title, could we anticipate a financial impact in the future in terms of the reclassification of their positions and higher wage?
I don't think that there would be any financial impact based on changing the reporting. If we were to alter any functions within those departments, I don't want to say that there would never be a time when that would possibly occur, but that would not be a direct result of just changing the reporting relationship.
Okay, great.
The current salaries are already in line or within the range of other department directors, and so that's why there's no need. And there are also smaller departments, albeit that's one of my concerns, and not a concern based on the reporting relationship, but for an organization of our size, we have very small HR, NIS departments and staffing. And how we're able to deal with that in future years is something that I want to be very personally engaged with.
Great, well, I agree. I think we have very understaffed IT and HR divisions, so this is great that you're getting more involved in it. And I'm guessing that it will certainly help our finance director to have some of those responsibilities office, because he's understaffed as well. So, it sounds like a great plan. Thank you for answering my questions.
All right. Do we have any other councillor questions or comments on this item? All right, this is for us, just a first reading, so we'll be -- we're moved and seconded to lay over. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We've laid this over by a vote of six to zero. Item eight are appointments. We have none, so we'll move on briskly to item nine, which is councillor activities and upcoming events. We'll start with Councilor Kelly.
Oh, I have nothing to report today.
All right. Councilor Slonaker.
This last Friday, I had an opportunity to work with the Work Ender Program that Chief Zabalski recommended or mentioned at a meeting. Had a group of six people that assisted in projects. Was a good group and a very good program to help people who owe fines. I attended a listening session for the community that the city's been doing with the public and the Plan Commission and my regular meetings. That's all.
All right, thank you. And Councilor DeForest.
Thank you. I also was able to attend the town hall listening session that was held on the west side of Hackett School, and I appreciate the residents who came out to attend that. It was really important that we have meetings on the west side. So, thank you for city manager staff for organizing that for us. I stopped out at Big Hill Park during the family wagon hayrides and saw some families taking advantage of the nice warm weather to do that. And thank you to our Parks and Rec Department for making that happen. Of course, I went to Holidazzle and it was fantastic, and this has been the warmest holidazzle ever, so that was very enjoyable. We could hang outside and talk longer with folks, and it was a great turnout from what I can see. I was privileged to be one of the panelists on the Black Lives Matter panel that was held at Beloit College this past Friday. Was really pleased that I could speak to the issue of white privilege on that panel. And I also was pleased with the organization and attendance of a planning meeting to look at youth intervention programming, to really try to meet the needs of youth who are expelled and how we can meet their needs so they're not just roaming the streets, and how we can support them to get back into school. I attended the driver's card rally that was sponsored by Job and SOS Latina, and I'm excited to hopefully see some possibilities for allowing for identification for individuals who are undocumented. I think it's a safety issue, and I'm hopeful that we can pursue that locally if the state doesn't step in and do it. I think they need to. And then finally, I was able to attend the Department of Transportation Stakeholders Meeting. Really proud of the construction training that we have available through Community Action that I lobbied for. And as part of my lobbying leverage, I am committed forever to attend these Department of Transportation meetings, but they're worth it to have that construction training here in Beloit. One piece of exciting news that, as I was looking at statistics, we currently have 53 Beloiters employed in construction training jobs on the work on 3990. So, it's 53 Beloiters, all people of color, African-American or Latino, making $20 to $30 an hour. So, I am thrilled, it's worth attending this meeting once a month to have this happen in Beloit. So, I'm very excited for all the people that helped bring that to fruition. Thank you.
Councilor Lukey.
It was nice Friday evening to see the trolley come into Beloit and go downtown in the warm weather and take people around. It's such a wonderful plus for Beloit. On a more somber note, and this is just coming from me as a city councillor, I've spoken to nobody else in the council, but I hope that our legislators in Madison and our representatives in Washington DC can act responsible and use a lot of common sense and reason and enact some laws that are long overdue. President Ronald Reagan, back in 86, signed a ban on military assault weapons, and it expired in 2004. We need to have people with courage and guts look at that again and look at it long and hard. We need to do the right and reasonable thing for the safety of people in Beloit, the state and the nation. So, that's coming from me as a city councillor, nobody else in the council. They may agree or disagree, but I feel that very strongly for our safety. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Last week, I attended a meeting at an organization called Society for Learning Unlimited, and the presentation was on how the city works and how well it's working. None other than manager Luther was there to speak to the group, which some of the retired college professors shot some pretty tough questions at her, and she handled it quite well.
Of course she did.
Of course she did. But at the close, I heard many people ask, be sure to come back next year. So, it was very, very informative. Thank you. Last week, I attended the Diversity Action Team Holiday Fest. I believe that this might have been the first one they've had, which is, in any event, is a great idea, where all of us of diversity talked about what we do about the holidays and a lot of people brought their dishes, the kind of things that they had back home or wherever that was. Some of the Latino kids were of various ages, were doing some wonderful folk dancing, which was -- so, a good time was had by all. It was certainly time well spent. I'd like to circle back to November 12. I couldn't make that council meeting after that, but on November 12, I attended the National Association of Colored Peoples Dinner. And it's the first one I had ever attended, and I can tell you, it was a very important event for me to see what was happening, what was talked about, what were the issues that were discussed, and to meet a lot of really great people. So, I expect that I'll be returning in the future, at least once a year, hopefully more.
Okay, thank you. I'm not going to add anything tonight. All right. Item 10, City Manager's Presentation, 10A.
Is the annual snow and ice control plan?
Can I do an introductory comment?
Okay, please, go right ahead.
I wanted to take this opportunity to publicly recognize all of our staff that was involved in our recent snow activity. That was my first major snowfall here in Beloit, and I was incredibly proud of the effort that our staff put forth and how quickly and how well they were able to clear our roads for public safety purposes. So, thank you, Chris, to you and all of your staff and to the entire city as an organization. We do quite a job of using staff from all over departments, not just public works, on these efforts, and it was really, really well done. So, congratulations. Thank you.
I'd like to thank you on behalf of myself and the staff. We sure did not -- whoops. We didn't start the season, want to start it with that big of a wet snow, but it worked out okay. And I can tell you, the first crew that was in, the supervisors were a little bit nervous, because typically when they go through, it's looking good, but you know, they didn't even get a half an hour round, and they're like, eh, I think we're losing this battle. And they said, how are we going to explain this to Chris? And they did all very well, and I was very pleased by the efforts that were put forth. It was a tough weekend, deer hunting, and I've got to tell you that we had half a dozen-plus guys that afternoon say, we're not going. And that's a big deal when the guys give up that weekend, so I was pretty happy. So, my pleasure to be here tonight to talk about winter maintenance and snow and ice. So, the general, I'm jumping around here, okay. General policy statement, it's very clear, nothing fancy about it. It's just to provide safe travel throughout the city. And our goals, to be able to complete that policy statement, are to address the expectations of the City of Beloit. That was done over 25 years ago, and I stood in front of council with the snow and ice policy and said, is this what you want? And they concurred, this is what our community wants. We need to be fiscally responsible. We need to provide a level that is safe, and I'm not saying clear roads, but a level that is safe. And at the same time, we want to consider our environmental aspects. So, the benefits of having a winter snow and ice plan, there are many, and I thought I would just share a half a dozen, eight of them with you. Economic stability, we want people to be able to get to work. We want our staff to be able to get to work. We want to provide a safe transportation system. We want people to be mobile, if that's walking, riding a bike, and/or driving cars, which we all do at various times. We want that to be able to happen. And we want emergency services, including ourselves, to be able to do our job and get people to the to be able to do our job and get people to the hospital or any place that they need to go. And the additional ones is reduce liability. For our city, if we do a good job and we have a plan, and we can say, this was our plan, we were doing the best that we could under the circumstance, that reduces our liability. We want to offer people equality of life. People that are homebound, stuck in because they cannot get out, I don't think that's quality of life. We want paratransit to be able to get people to and from where they need to be. We want to be accepted by the public, and we want to explain to the public why we do the things we do and why maybe we don't have bare pavement. And then we want to be able to reduce, of course, environmental effects. So, our objectives are these four: minimize hazards, reduce economic losses, restore travel conditions, and provide a service that is both efficient and environmentally responsible. So, how do we do that? We prioritize what we do. So, we have arterials, mains, hills, bridges, and then we have the residential streets. Typically, we do not go into the residential until we know our arterials are good. However, this last storm, we tweaked it up a little bit, and we knew the pavement was warm, things were going to work if sun came out, and it did. So, we did, about an hour before the storm abated, we started in the secondaries. Typically, would stay right on the arterials. And then also parking lots, alleys, and sidewalks. Parking lots and sidewalks are prioritized. They are done by the Parks Department, our division, and then we take care of the alleys as well, and that is low priority for us. So, we talk about this a lot with staff. What is the level of service that residents expect? And is that level of service, living in Wisconsin and choosing to live in this beautiful frozen tundra, does it need to be like you see in the top left or right-hand side? Do we need bare pavement? Do we need bare shoulders? You didn't see that at the initiation of this storm this time. What you saw were bare wheel pass. And so, on our secondaries, you know, are the bottom pitches okay? I think they are. I don't think we have to lay salt down. I don't think that's being environmentally responsible, and I think residents, when I was a kid, knew how to drive on this, and I believe that they can learn, relearn how to drive on these. So, cul-de-sacs, do they need to be bare pavement? We don't think so. So, I think it depends on where you are and can you drive on it. You can drive responsibly on all four of those pitches, but can we afford that top one on the left? I don't think so. Can we get to that after a day? You saw we did. You know, so I think it's called, everybody needs to slow down, drive responsibly, two hands on the wheel, no texting, you know, paying attention to what you're doing, and that's what we're trying to encourage of everybody that's out there. So, the key issues that we have, and Lori alluded to it, are personnel. We utilize as many people from as many departments, divisions as possible. Our route assignments are key. When we get guys off their routes, they get in trouble because they're not sure of where they're going, where are the curves, where are the obstacles. We do a lot of training. This year, in the fall, we actually did twelve hours plus of training. That's a lot. But we want our staff appropriately trained. That bottom pitcher is actually part of the training, and so is the top one. We were putting salt down at different application rates, trying to get the drivers to comprehend what it looks like at three hundred pounds per lane mile versus five hundred pounds per lane mile. Our fleet, we want that fleet up and running. We've got great equipment, we've got a variety of equipment, appropriate use of materials. We are always looking to be able to reduce costs in snow and ice, and it is not easy anymore. We've cut a lot of money from this budget. However, I'm happy to say, as of today, we will be again trying a new liquid product on two roads in Beloit, and we'll see how that goes. That vendor came to us because we are known in the country for our expertise. They are also looking at locating a plant, if this works, in our community. So, we are going to try what's called AMP. And unlike our sugar beet, it will be a complex carbohydrate that's base is corn-derived. So, we'll see. And the last but not least, weather information is important. This is what, I wanted to show this slide because it's important that, this is what the anti-icing does for us when we're out driving before the storm, and it is funny because today and last year, the year prior, we must be doing a really good job because residents call us, and they even notice when we're using the white lines or the brown lines. And why are you doing that? Because I thought, it's cold, so then you're supposed to have brown lines, not white lines. So, our residents, I think, are pretty well-educated, and they watch when we anti-ice, and they plan their lives accordingly around that. And I know that because they call me and say, I need to get to the store because when's the storm coming? I need to get my prescription because I saw you guys out spraying that stuff. So, it's working if we can educate residents. And part of that is to let residents know their responsibilities. These are sidewalks in Beloit, and it is their responsibility to clean these sidewalks, just like the Parks Division needs to clean ours within forty-eight hours. Mailboxes occasionally get hit. We had a half a dozen this last storm. It is the responsibility of the resident to locate that mailbox according to U.S. Postal Service Regulations, and it is our responsibility to attempt not to hit them. If we hit them and they are according to the U.S. Postal Service requirements, we will put up a standard box and post. Moving snow. We would ask residents not to plow and/or blow their snow in the road after we've gone through. That just costs us a lot of money if we have to go back and re-clean once we're through there. We will attempt to do declarations, and you know that we tend to do those when we think we're going to have a full crew out. We do that to get the cars off the street. That's the primary reason. It is very inefficient to have to go back and clean up all those snow islands. Evidently, that person didn't get the memo. When you see cars like that, for sure, we are asking our helpers in the police department to get those cars towed, because that tells us all they didn't hear or they didn't see out their window what was happening. So, to help residents, we have emergency parking. We did this about five years ago, where they're actually marked on the west side, downtown, and on the east side. I won't read through these, but they're up on the screen, and they are on the web, the web, our webpage. We also have a map on the webpage. If there's confusion, please give us a call, and we will help you. If you give us where you live, we'll tell you the nearest place that you could park. And I threw this one up here. This is out on Town Hall. There are occasions, and I have done it probably four times in my tenure, where we close a road, where we cannot see where we're going, and it is just too dangerous. We'll post barricades, road closed. Two thousand and eight, we did this on Town Hall because it was ten-foot deep with wind blowing. It was not safe to go out there at all. Very seldom. Four times in twenty-five years is not much, but I do want you to know, and we've done it on the west side as well, on the far west and on the far east where the wind blows. So, if residents have questions, I would encourage them to give us a call or to go on the city's webpage, or go on Facebook. And Facebook, this last time, they were very, very kind to us, and I thank all the residents that were posting. It was great. So, are there any questions? Not? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Item eleven is reports from boards and city officers, eleven A.
The city council will adjourn into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute nineteen-eight-five sub-one G to confer with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved.
Do we have a motion to go into closed session?
Motion.
Move by Lukey, second by Kincaid. All in favor of going into closed session, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are in closed session. Let's adjourn to the conference room. We are in closed session. Let's adjourn to the conference room.
...
Well, we do. So, it's not a big. So, I. It's kind of the. That's why. All right. Yeah. Like. Yeah. I wait for it. I, I hope. You. I want to. Well. I. Um, yeah. There, there. I do. I, I have. I don't know. Oh, so. I don't know. Well. I think. I think it's more down. Uh, I have. All right. Right. Well, we've got. I want to say. I want to. You know. I'm. So. I agree. My, my. Are you. Do you. In there yet? Are you. So, uh. Well. Do you. Well. So. I. That's. I. I think. That's. I think. I think. I think. There we go. All we're. I think, no, I think. Yeah. I think. I think so. Right now. Well, that's what you're. Yeah. We all. I think. Yeah. I think. All right. All right. I think you're right. I think you're all. And. I think. A lot. Yeah. The way. Well. Oh, yeah. I. You. Good. Right. I think. I think. Yeah. I think. I think. I think. Yeah. Yeah. Good. Good. This is. I'm not trying to. I. I know what to say. There, there. It may be a while. There is. Okay. Okay. I know. I, 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 uh, I have a hard time. Ask you. I don't know. Well, you can ask. My name's. I've just told you. You can ask me anything. Well, I'm here. I was just wondering if someone could show you. Your light bulb down here. I, my job is to. They have to be in the building. Or like. Or leave the building. And maybe some of the lights. And the door down. So, I'll. We'll take care of that. I'll help you. Okay. I know. I lost. No problem. No problem. Thank you. Uh, thanks for having the doors open. Yeah. By the way, the building. Definitely clean up. And has a job. But thanks for having the doors open. Oh, yeah. Yeah. But I have lots. I think they've been out there. They've been locked down. You know what I mean? You guys can get out. But nobody can come back yet. Okay. So, well, okay. Uh, door. Door. You know. Yeah. Nobody is. It's. This elevator is open. Well. No. You can go in the outdoor. Pardon me? I can hear you. Go in the outdoor. The outdoor. Well, if you bang on the door, I'll just listen. I guess that. I guess. I know. I don't know what to do. No, just go ahead. You, you, go ahead. You take off. I'll, I'll handle it from here. Okay. But I just. All I do is. Like, you guys are done. I don't know how long it's gonna be. But I just need some of the stuff. These light bulbs. So, the door. And then certainly going to last. Nobody's. Okay. Uh, I'll certainly pass that on to the city manager. Okay. I, I truly need to say this. If I lost, I would get out. Well, we don't want that to happen. No. And if they do, we just, we just have to call Tony. Okay. I'm new here, so I don't know how to do it. You get. You're doing a fantastic job. Beautiful job. And you're very nice too. Thank you. Nice guy. Yeah. Thank you. That's. I'll be soon.
Mike's looking in it for the last hour now, right?
He's. 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 He's over. Okay. Only she's heard it. She's heard it. Is that right? Is that right? All right. So. I suppose. If nobody.
Uh, Kelly. Uh, all in favor of moving into open session, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are in open session.
Move to adjourn.
Okay. That's item twelve, adjournment. Uh, we have a motion from DeForest, second by Slonaker. All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.